They marked no or small impact. I question that to be a moderate to large impact may occur.
Do we have a delineation of the 500-year floodplain?
I don't have it in front of me.
Is that included? Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, I don't have it in front of me.
Okay. What do you say?
Well, most of the current parking lot would be inundated in a 500-year event. But we're not impacting it in a material way.
The lowest level, the parking garage could flood in a 500-year event. No housing units to be affected. And we're not making the situation worse by digging deeper. It's just know that in a-
And again, that goes back to where Part III comes into the whole-
We can explain that in a-
-part of the process.
Fine.
So it would be written into that explanation.
So what are we gonna, where are we then with that? Are we gonna agree with a no or small?
Nope. I marked it moderate to large, but I'm asking for the board.
I guess I would need a little more explanation. What's the difference between the 100 and the 500-year?
Okay. And that could be Part III.
We can, we can work on you with that one.
Yep.
Okay.
The 500 just is a more extreme event that occurs less frequently. And would inundate to a higher level elevation of the Asopus Creek coming up than 100-year. We can work with you on all that.
There's no housing units at that level. And with the parking garage, obviously, the lower level can theoretically flood. It's concrete.
Yep.
Can waters flow in and out-
Yes.
-of this structure, the way it's being built?
It'll be designed with a resilient design so that if it does ever flood, the water will drain out when the flood recedes and there'll be little to no damage at all to the building.
Quite frankly, a very tiny portion of the parking lot currently that's towards the Catskill Hudson Bank, is it? It is in, just below the base flood elevation. And the Catskill Hudson Bank building, which is, I think, a Deegan building, but, you know, is like three inches below. So, I mean, we're really not having a material impact on the 100-year, although we are developing a little bit in that 100-year. We're not building substantial improvements in that. And, but the 500-year, obviously, is a different threshold. That's not covered with your law, but it's in your question here, so. I think we can come up with-
Right.
-suitable explanation on that.
Okay.
So we're gonna agree with a moderate to large? Good, okay.
Okay. So the next one was, "The proposed action may result in or require modification of existing drainage patterns." They had no or small. I marked it as potentially a moderate to large. And again, this goes to, you know, Part III where we would just have to address that, which I think we can do.
Yeah, I think it's small, below small. As far as changing patterns, we're not changing them at all, except-
Okay.
We're gonna infiltrate a little bit more because we can in a few areas. But, but the patterns in the areas of discharge are gonna be exactly the same, except we're collecting and treating to the same discharge points in the Schwenck Drive storm system, so.
What is the board?
I think it's small. I mean, right now, there are no-
I think it's small, too.
There are no-
Okay. Dennis described it, I thought it was small.
So we agree with the applicant with no or small impact?
Correct.
Okay.
So then, the next is, "The proposed action may change floodwater flows that contribute to flooding." I agree with their answer, no or small. Okay.
Agree.
If F is, if there is a dam located on site of the proposed action, is the dam in need of repair or upgrade? No.
Agree.
Agree.
There were no other impacts identified unless any board members have anything? Okay. So then, impacts on air. The proposed action may include a state-regulated air emission source. They marked it no. I concur.
I agree. We agree.
Okay. So we'll move down to number seven. Impact on plants and animals. They said yes. The proposed action may result in the loss of flora and fauna. The proposed action may cause reduction in population or loss of individuals of any threatened or endangered species as listed in New York State or federal government that use the site or are found on, over, or near the site. They marked it no or small. I, I agree.
I agree.
Before we go further to, on this section, I think that we should also attach the survey that was provided to us by the applicants, by their expert for flora and fauna. Okay?
Yep.
And plants and animals. Okay. "The proposed action may result in a reduction of degradation of any habitat used by any rare, threatened, or endangered species as listed by New York State or the federal government." I agree with the no.
Agree.
Agree.
"The proposed action may cause reduction in population or loss of individuals of any species of special concern or conservation need as listed by New York State or the federal government that use the site or that are found on, over, or near the site." I agree with their answer, no.
I agree.
Okay. D, "The proposed action may result in a reduction or degradation of any habitat used by any species or special concern and conservation need as listed by New York State or the federal government." I would agree with their, no.
Agree.
Okay. E. "The proposed action may diminish the capacity of a registered national natural landmark to support the biological community it was established to present." I agree with their no.
Agree.
"The proposed action may result in the, listen, the removal of or ground disturbance in any portion of a designated significant natural community." I agree with their no.
Agree.
G, "The proposed action may substantially interfere with nesting, breeding, foraging, or overwintering habitat for the predominant species that occupy the project site." I agree with no.
Agree.
Okay. Let's see. "The proposed action, commercial, industrial, or recreational projects only involves use of herbicides or pesticides." No.
Agree.
You have to read letter H.
What was that?
Letter H. We skipped.
Oh, I skipped over that one. "The proposed action requires the conversion of more than 10 acres of forest, grassland, or any other regionally or locally important habitat. Habitat type and information source."
No.
Okay?
I agree with no.
Okay, then we're going down to J. Other impacts. They said wildlife displacement and loss of street trees. And they wrote no, but I think that with the reports and the plans that are provided, they show that that's all gonna be addressed. So that'll be attached. So we're good with no? Okay. Okay. Onto number eight. Impact on agricultural resources. "The proposed action may impact agricultural resources." I agree with no.
I do. I agree with no.
It's kind of a no-brainer. Oh, gosh.
Well, I know how I feel with resolutions, you know?
You want me to read letter nine? I'll read nine. "Impacts on aesthetic resources. The land use of the proposed action are obviously different from or are in sharp contrast to current land use patterns between the proposed project and scenic and aesthetic resources." Applicant checked yes. Moving on, subsection A. "Proposed action may be visible from any officially designated federal, state, or local scenic or aesthetic resource." Applicant checked, "Moderate to large impact may occur." I'm presuming based on the Senate-
Senate, House, yes.
I agree.
And the historic district. Yeah.
Agree. "The proposed action may result in the obstruction, elimination, or significant screening of one or more officially designated scenic views." Applicant checked, "No or small impact may occur."
Do we want to consider moderate on that one, based on the previous one?
I said moderate to large.
Our only question would be, obviously, we're adding a viewing plaza there, but what officially designated scenic view?
There are none.
Specifically referring to a officially designated scenic view. I know we're obstructing the view coming down Wall Street to the foothills.
So we don't have an officially designated scenic view?
We don't have like a Hudson River designated greenway or anything like that.
Do we want to stay with no on that one? I mean, I'm asking-
I would say no.
I say no.
Okay. I'm agreeing with no. Good argument there, Dennis.
Subsection C. "The proposed action may be visible from publicly accessible vantage points." We have seasonally. Nothing checked. Year-round, we have moderate to large impact may occur.
Agree.
Yeah. And I think that's kind of saying what you were thinking it'd be.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Subsection D. "The situation or activity in which viewers are engaged while viewing the proposed action is..." Subsection I. "Routine travel by residents, including travel to and from work." Applicant has checked, "No or small impact may occur."
I agree.
I agree.
Agree.
"Recreational or tourism-based activities." Applicant has, "No or small impact may occur."
Agree.
Agree.
Agreed. Subsection E. "The proposed action may cause a diminishment of the public enjoyment and appreciation of the designated aesthetic resources." Applicant has checked, "No or small impact may occur."
I agree.
Agree.
I agree. Subsection F. "There are similar projects visible within the following distance of the proposed project." Applicant has, "No or small impact may occur."
Agree.
Agree.
I agree. Subsection G. Other impacts. I'm sorry, did you have a question? Okay. Subsection G. Other impacts. Visual context of the historic district. Applicant has, "Moderate to large impact may occur."
I agree.
I agree.
Agree.
Moving on. Number 10. "Impact on historic and archaeological resources. The proposed action may occur in or adjacent to historical or archaeological resources." The applicant has checked, "Yes." Subsection A. "The proposed action may occur wholly or partially within or substantially contiguous to any buildings, archaeological sites, or district which is listed on the National or State Register of Historic Places or that has been determined by the Commissioner of the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation to be eligible for a listing on the State Register of Historic Places." The applicant has checked, "Moderate to large impact may occur." I agree.
Agree.
Subsection B. "The proposed action may occur wholly or partially within or substantially contiguous to an area designated as a sensitive, rather, an area designated as sensitive for archaeological sites on the New York State Historic Preservation Office SHPO Archaeological Site Inventory." Applicant has checked, "Moderate to large impact may occur." I agree.
Yes.
"The proposed action may occur wholly or partially within or substantially contiguous to an archaeological site not included on the New York SHPO inventory." Applicant has, "No or small impact may occur."
On that one, I think it should be moderate to large. And we'll attach Joe Diamond's report and how Joe has submitted to us that he'll be on-site when excavation is done, so he will have that record. It's part of his report.
What's the archaeological site that's not included? What do you mean? I don't-
Duck gate.
Until, until anything is excavated, you don't know. So in Joe's...
I, I've read that. Yeah, I don't need to get it. I know what you mean, but I just didn't know.
That's how you interpret Joe's report?
Yeah.
It's a confusing question.
I'm gonna, yeah, I'll just attach Joe's report to the, to the form.
Are we agreeing with moderate to large, then? Or no?
The only question is, if we were to write a response to that-
I'm not sure what the archaeological site is, though.
Yeah, that's why I-
Well, I mean-
I'm having a problem with the wording.
There's been Native American activity through there. There's, there's no doubt about that.
That's, that's, I think that's what they're up to. That's the entire Oyster County.
I know. But I, there has been some, I think, focused Native American activity in this area in particular, so.
Continues to an archaeological site not included on SHPO inventory.
Sue, you're saying because the word "may" is there, right? Not because, yeah, because the word "may" is there. May occur. That's which...
Well, we'll just attach the report. All right, is that fine? Do you want to go with moderate? Or we, we agree?
I'd rather leave it no or small, but that's just my-
All right, let's take a vote on it. Those in favor of no, raise your hand. We got three. Those in favor of moderate to large impact may occur, raise your hand. We got three.
Three, two. Yeah.
I'm just an alternate, so I don't-
He's an alternate, so three, two.
So it's, we're going with a no, no or small impact? That's what it looks like?
Originally it was three, so we're going with the no to small impact.
Yes, okay. All right.
But we can still attach the report.
Okay.
Still attach it, absolutely.
Yes.
Item number D. Does the board see any other impacts? The applicant did not.
No.
All right. Item E. "If any of the above, A through D, are answered, 'Moderate to large impact may occur,' continue with the following questions to help support conclusions in Part III. The proposed action may result in the destruction or alternation of all or part of the site or property." And we have checked, marked, "Moderate to large impact may occur."
Agree.
Agree.
Agreed. "The proposed action may result in the alteration of the property's setting or integrity." Applicant has checked, "Moderate to large impact may occur." We agree. "The proposed action may result in the introduction of visual elements which are out of character with the site or property or may alter its setting." Applicant has checked, "Moderate to large impact may occur."
Agree. I've been asked to just clarify that one of our members, Chuck Palaco, is not here and that Jamie Mills is acting as a voting member. So just want to put that on the record.
Item 11. "Impact on open space and recreation." The applicant has checked, "No."
Agree.
Do we agree? Agree. Item 12. "Impact on critical environmental areas." The applicant has checked, "No."
I agree.
Agree.
Agreed. Item 13. "Impact on transportation. The proposed action may result in a change to existing transportation systems." The applicant has checked, "Yes." Subsection A. "Projected traffic increase may exceed capacity of existing road network." Applicant has checked, "No or small impact may occur."
Agree. I agree.
Do we agree? Agree.
I would agree.
"The proposed action may result in the construction of paved parking area for 500 or more vehicles." The applicant has, "No or small impact may occur."
Agree.
"The proposed action will degrade existing transit access." The applicant has listed, "No or small impact may occur."
Agree.
Agreed. "The proposed action will degrade existing pedestrian or bicycle accommodations." The applicant has checked, "No or small impact."
Agree.
Agree.
"The proposed action may alter the present pattern of movement of people or goods." We have checked, "Moderate to large impact may occur."
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Agreed.
Agreed. Did you want to speak to that at all? No. I saw you getting prepared for something, so, okay.
No objection, just-
Okay.
Other impacts. Closing off the Fair Street entrance-exit. This is the Fair Street extension portion. The applicant has checked, "Moderate to large impact may occur." I agree.
Agree.
Agreed.
And on this, I would add, though, that we'll also attach the Creighton-Manning Traffic Impact Study and the HVEA.
Traffic study.
And if I may just, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, no. You can go ahead, but I do have, I have just a question.
Sure. Sure, I just wanted to add that when I look at, and I think when any engineer looks at transportation, they're not just talking about moving vehicles. They're talking about pedestrians, bicyclists. And one of the things that the closure of Fair Street will do, while it will change vehicular traffic patterns, it will provide for an enhanced pedestrian and bicycle experience. Because you're going from a four-legged intersection now to a three-leg and a pedestrian plaza, which will offer a more walkable area. So I would, I would say that while it's, it's moderate in the sense of vehicular traffic, it is an improvel, an improved pedestrian experience.
Okay. Thank you.
Is this where I can, I can have questions? I'm sorry. The reactivization of the two lights. We, they were full traffic lights and we reduced them to blinking. And it seems to be moving traffic along better than when they were full traffic lights. So, I mean, how do you feel, like, do you really feel like that this is, that will be needed with this to reactivate them? I mean-
I do, yes. And one of the things that we uncovered when we looked at this is that the traffic signal that was operating years past, I'm not sure when it went to flash.
At Schwenck or North Front?
Uh, Schwenck.
Okay.
It was probably operating on a system where there was no detection. So the signal didn't know that your car was there, so it provided the same amount of time, regardless if there was a car there or not, which can lead to delays if, if the time is not needed. This signal, when it's upgraded, would provide for that detection, so it'd optimize the approaches so that when green time is needed, it will give that time to a car. So when we simulated it, we assumed that, and it's far better than it is. It's also just practically, when you're at an all-way stop with multiple lanes, it can be a little bit dicey, like, who goes first? And when you're adding more, more traffic to that area, we think the signal will kind of normalize it for most people. And it's a better, it's also a better experience for pedestrians.
Because it was surprising that that intersection worked without the full traffic light.
Right.
Because it is such a complicated intersection.
Yeah.
I will say that I pass through that regularly. It, it works, but a lot of people get cut off.
Yeah.
Especially with the people exiting the plaza with the railroad tracks and everyone kind of sneaks out and, and it's kind of, you know, who goes first? I can comment, that did not have any detection because I would sit there at a red light and I'm the only one sitting at the intersection.
Well, that's why it was, it was such an old traffic light.
And then you get stacking during regular busy.
When it, yeah, when it died, we took it. It was very expensive to replace, so they, they took it out.
Yeah, well, that's-
So like a newer system might better, because we had complaints. The light was too long, the light was too short. You know, you sit, 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 you know, so that was a big complaint about that.
Because it just rotated around whether people were there or not.
Right. Um, did not look at it. A small circle tends to be, you know, you have to design it for trucks, number one, which we would need to consider as part of this. The other thing, too, is that from a pedestrian experience, having a signal that is predictable with buttons to cross the street, I think, works a little bit better in this particular environment.
So you're saying, so you have the same feeling about the one at North Front and Wall that, that we just talked about at Schwenck? You feel like it'll be better to have the full light there?
Just to be clear, the project isn't recommending a full light at Wall and North Front. We, we were asked to analyze it by HVEA in the most recent correspondence. It would provide a marginal benefit based on what you have there today, but the cost of doing that is not commensurate with the, with the gain. It's a couple of seconds of improved delay. So our thought was, leave it as a flashing. It works well. Pedestrians know how to navigate it. And it certainly doesn't make sense under the DRI proposal because Wall would be going the other way. There'd be really no traffic approaching North Front.
You're also reducing traffic because you don't have people cutting up Fair Street Extension entering into the intersection.
Right.
Right.
That, that must have, that, it is in here. It says, "In addition, we suggest," but that's our traffic people, right?
Right.
That are recommending that? Okay. Okay. Those were my questions.
So based on these discussions, the board is comfortable with everything that was answered in 13A through F? Okay.
Yes.
All right. Number 14. "Impact on energy. The proposed action may cause an increase in the use of any form of energy." The applicant has checked, "Yes." Subsection A. "The proposed action will require a new or an upgrade to an existing substation." They have checked, "No or small impact may occur." I agree with that.
Agree.
"The proposed action will require the creation or extension of an energy transmission or supply system to serve more than 50 single- or two-family residents or to serve a commercial or industrial use." Applicant has checked, "No or small impact may occur."
Agree.
"The proposed action may utilize more than 2,500, was it, milliwatts per year of electricity." The applicant has checked, "No or small impact may occur." I agree.
Agree.
"The proposed action may involve heating and/or cooling of more than 100,000 square feet of building area when completed." The applicant has checked, "No or small impact may occur."
Agree.
Agreed. Any other impacts from the board? No.
No.
Yeah, just clarify one thing I said for you on the transportation. Sorry to kill the flow here. Where the driveway for the site is on North Front proposed, the existing stanchion for the all-way flashing light-
Yep.
-will be in the way. So we will need to modify it, but we won't change the way the intersection functions.
Okay.
So I just want to clarify that.
Okay.
Item 15. "Impact on noise, odor, and light. The proposed action may result in increase in noise, odors, or outdoor lighting." Applicant has checked, "Yes." Subsection A. "The proposed action may produce sound above noise levels established by local regulation." We have checked, "No or small impact may occur."
On that one, I had thought of moderate to large. While it might only be temporary during construction, that can be responded to, that they'll need a noise permit from the city as, you know, as a routine.
But if they apply for noise impact, isn't that just a simple administrative function? I mean, is that, how would that trigger it to be a large impact? I'm just, I mean, don't, it doesn't, the city, under construction, under billing, don't they requ, don't they-
Anybody, correct, yes.
But, but the city governs the hours, the noise, the timing? So that's already in place?
Under the, right, under the city's noise ordinance, correct.
So this doesn't mean that it is a protracted, a sound-producing?
It, it's not, no. It would be a temporary thing and-
Okay.
So you're just saying for the construction, not for the, the project itself is not going to cause that?
But I interpret this as talking about the project as a whole.
Right.
Not just the construction phase.
Post-construction.
Everything. The end result.
End result.
I don't know that I would agree with that. I think it should be, you know, and it can be written into part three, that a noise permit will be required by the City of Kingston for constru, all construction work.
But that, that's already part.
But then you still don't need to, I mean, you can't, I agree, you could do that, but I don't know that that would raise that to the level of moderate, moderate to large overall.
All right, let's take a vote. All those in favor of moderate, moderate to large impact may occur? Anybody? All those in favor of no or small impact may occur? Okay, smaller, no impact may occur.
What?
Subsection B. The proposed action may result in blasting within 1,500 feet of any residence, hospital, school, licensed daycare center, or nursing home.
Agree.
Applicant has checked, no or small impact may occur. Board agrees?
Agree.
Subsection C, the proposed action may result in routine odors for more than one hour per day. Applicant has checked, no or small impact may occur.
Agree.
Agree.
Subsection D, the proposed action may result in light shining onto adjoining properties. The applicant has checked, no or small impact may occur.
Agree.
Subsection E, the proposed action may result in lighting creating sky glow brighter than the existing area conditions. Applicant has checked, no or small impact may occur.
Agree.
Any other impacts from board members? Okay. Number 16, impact on human health. The proposed action may have an impact on human health from exposure to new or existing sources of contaminants. The applicant has checked, no. The board agree?
Agree.
On this? On this one, though, I think we should also attach that the asbestos work, Dennis, will attach the report that the asbestos has been removed from the building?
Yeah, that was submitted.
Right.
Dennis, there was, there is one question here that probably merits address. It says, the proposed action may result in the unearthing of solid, solid or hazardous waste. I don't believe there's any hazardous waste, but is the old parking garage buried there?
The concrete footings are, but that wouldn't be considered solid waste.
Not, nothing else?
No.
Okay.
From, from what we understand from speaking to the demolition contractor, actually did the work, they cut the steel off, cleaned up the site, and then paved it, so there should be no solid waste, there will be concrete and steel, which would be recycled.
Which is allowed for fill.
Yeah.
Anyway, so.
They're going to unearth anything but old footings and foundations for both Montgomery Wards and the parking garage and the warehouse.
Is there, there, there's no underground tanks, correct? Are there?
Based on these discussion, the board is still comfortable with no for item number 16?
Yes.
Yeah, I concur.
Number 17, consistency with community plans. The proposed action is not consistent with adopted land use plans. The applicant has checked, yes. Subsection A, the proposed action's land use components may be different from or in sharp contrast to the current surrounding land use patterns. Check is no or small impact may occur.
Agree.
Agreed. The proposed action will cause the permanent population of the city, town, or village in which the project is located to grow by more than 5%. We have checked, no or small impact may occur.
Agree.
Agreed. The proposed action is inconsistent with local land use plans or zoning regulations. We have no or small impact may occur.
Agree.
The proposed action is inconsistent with any county plans or other regional land use plans. We have checked, no or small impact may occur. Agreed? The proposed action may cause a change in the density of development that is not supported by existing infrastructure, or is distant from existing infrastructure. We have checked, no or small impact may occur.
Agree.
Agreed, everybody's agreed?
Yep.
The proposed action is located in an area characterized by low-density development that will require new or expanded public infrastructure. We have checked, no or small impact may occur.
Agree.
Okay. The proposed action may introduce secondary development impacts. Example, residential or commercial development not included in the proposed action. We have checked, no or small impact may occur. I agree.
Agree.
Letter H, other. The proposed action requires a zoning change for a small portion of this site. We have checked, no or small impact may occur.
Agree.
Agree.
Any other impacts? Okay. Number 18, consistency with community character. The proposed project is inconsistent with the existing community character. We have checked, no. Does the board agree with that? And in making that decision, let's look at the questions. A, the proposed action may replace or eliminate existing facilities, structures, or areas of historic importance to the community. The proposed action may create a demand for additional community services, schools, police, fire. Proposed action may displace affordable or low-income housing in an area where there is a shortage of such housing. Do you guys want to? Any questions on these?
No.
Any comments? The proposed action may interfere with the use or enjoyment of officially recognized or designated public resources. Do you want to go through and answer these? What's the board's pleasure? I see a lot of people questioning.
So far, yeah, so far, okay.
Are we nosed on all of these? The proposed action may interfere with the use or enjoyment of officially recognized or designated public resources. I think that's a no. The proposed action is inconsistent with the predominant architectural scale and character. I think that, we've gone through various boards with that in historical commissions. Proposed action is inconsistent with the character of the existing natural landscape. And any other impacts? So based on that, on those questions, does any board members have any questions, or are we comfortable with the original no?
I'm, I'm good.
I'm good.
You're good? Everyone good with the no? So for item 18, we're in agreement, no?
I'm in agreement.
No?
No.
Agreed, agreed.
Okay. All right, that's 18.
All right, so part two is completed then, right? So we're. I said, part two was completed, but we have to do that. Yes, so we've, we've concluded this. Now, moving forward, with the proposed changes to the application, we're going to open, reopen the public hearing on this.
My feeling is that the public, we should reopen for a public hearing. I think that this board has spent a tremendous amount of time on this project. I think we've been open with all of our meetings with the community. We haven't hid or had any backroom meetings, and I think in transparency, a, 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 one more meeting, whether we do it at our next general meeting, I'm, I'm fine with. I don't think we have a huge calendar. That's coming up, and we do a open, see what comments people have on these additional units, and close it.
Good, everybody agree with that?
And then the record is what it is.
And I agree, I agree. And the next, at our regular meeting will be November 18th, is that correct, Sue? We'll, we'll place it on that agenda?
And based on today's date, do we have the ability to have that public hearing on that date? We meet the timeframes?
Do you want to start any earlier than 6 o'clock, or do you want to start at 6?
What's our calendar look like?
It's about 13, 14 items, it's not the, you know, it's the average. Well, all we can do is at 6 and continue, it's up to you.
No, that's fine. Well, the, the only, I mean, the only issue is, our meetings typically start at 6, so I don't want to have a public meeting at 5:30, close it at 5:45, and then people show up at 6, and they don't have the opportunity. So whether, I don't know if we can hold the public meeting off in that meeting, instead of doing it in the beginning, maybe.
Or we just start them, our regular meeting at 5:30, is that, is that what? And just to make that one of the, one of the items on the public hearings for that, for that evening?
Yeah, I would. Everyone be here at 5:30?
5:30?
So I would say that we push this back on the calendar, so that we know it's after 6, 6:15. We can get some of our basic applications done, so that people, if they want to come in and go home, they can, and then once we're after the 6 o'clock mark, we can take this up on the calendar.
So you want to have the other items on first, you're saying?
Let's, let's move some people in and out, and see if we can get some people in earlier.
Or can we just mod, can we tell the people, the, because they, as it goes right now, you kind of give the applicant, all the applicants, an idea of what time they should show up, right? Is that something you do right now? Is that?
What I'm saying, can we pull a few of those applicants and see if some people are willing to come in at 5:30, and we can just?
Yeah, if you'd rather do it that way, or else we can have them go first up.
I don't think they should go at 5:30, I think they should be after 6. Therefore, we have a traditional meeting at 6 o'clock, and people always expect to be here at 6 o'clock.
Then we'll just do it at 6.
That's fine.
Okay.
That's fine, then do it 6.
And also, I just want to make it known that the applicant has also asked that a public hearing be held as well.
That, that's correct.
Okay. Okay, so we will set the public hearing as part of our regular meeting agenda for November 18th, starting at 6 o'clock with the regular meeting. Good? Everybody's good with that? That will be. Placed on our website, and, and, yeah, okay.
Sorry, so the, so the public hearing will be first or second?
Well, it's, you know, we do public hearings first, and we have, we'll go through our regular, you know, we'll do the last, the minutes from the previous meeting, all that. We'll have the open public speaking, right? We've got to do that first, and then we hop into public hearings.
Okay, I just feel bad making the applicants wait. You know, I mean, it's like, most of them go fairly quickly.
Generally, they call before, so I'll just tell them to maybe come a little bit later.
Okay.
And there may be. An influx of people wanting to speak, too, so, I mean, we put this first on the agenda, then, okay? Do you want to leave that up to staff?
Yeah.
Yeah, look at the calendar.
All right.
And the, the planning board will take care of the notice, the public notice.
Yes.
Yes. All right, so what do we have to vote on tonight? Just tabling right now?
We're tabling.
Two items?
Yeah, for public hearing, on the.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. So at this time, I'll make a motion that we table items number two and three from old business tonight, and also we're setting a public hearing for this on November 18th. Do I have a second on that? Second by Matt Gillis. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. And can we, on our website, can we also show the, the two different illustration, the, of the before and after, because that's something we can do?
Of the vis, of, you're talking about the visuals?
Yeah.
Can you do that, Joe? You show the before and after of the visuals on, on the website?
And we can get that information and put it on ours as well. Okay, I didn't know if you had it or not, that.
I didn't know if I got it yet.
We sent it last week.
Okay.
Well, you sent it the same day, the 24th, whenever we sent in the other traffic stuff.
Okay.
But, so you had the before, you should have the after.
Okay.
Wayne, while we're here, calendars, because we're heading now toward holidays, if we have this regular meeting. With the public, we're going to, listen, we're going to have public comment at our next regular meeting.
Right.
And then are we going to have another special meeting to continue?
We will schedule, as we've been doing.
Correct, but I'm.
Do you want to do that?
Yeah.
Are we going to do that now, or at a doodle poll? How are we going to accomplish that? What do you want to do?
Well, I'm just, I mean, our next regular scheduled meeting is the 18th, correct?
Yes.
And then, and then the following week is Thanksgiving. So we're looking at, I would say, probably first or second week of December, because then we're heading into, third week, we're already here for a planning board meeting, and then we're into Christmas.
Yeah, our regular meeting in, in December will be the 16th.
16th. And I don't think board members are going to want to do anything after that date, heading into holidays. So we're looking at the week of the second, or the week of the ninth, for a special meeting on this.
Yeah, I don't know.
No, but I mean, are board members here the week of the second night? Like, let's get some, some dates here, so that.
I'm here. I'm okay with both of those days.
Yeah.
Do we want, what date?
If possible, the week of the second is better, the week of the ninth, I'm supposed to be not here.
Okay.
We want to fly back if I had to, but. Do we want to do it on a Monday? Does that work?
Monday, the second, you want to shoot for that?
Does that work for the applicant?
And we'll just work for, get some.
We just have to make sure this, this room is available.
Why don't we give a couple of dates? Why don't we shoot for the week of the second? The first Monday.
I can do any day that week of the second.
But that, that could be council.
Right, but I'm just saying, so if Monday doesn't work for some reason, any, any night that week, I could do.
I'm good that first week as well.
I'm not good on Thursday, that's all, so.
Okay.
The fifth.
We're not good on Thursday either, because we have HOBC, so it can't be Thursday.
All right.
So we're looking at third, fourth applicants?